I would like to make a motion to have the Chair to extend the offer of the contract terms as discussed in executive session to Bill Olson as Superintendent of Rutland City Public Schools beginning 7/1/2020.
It's our second?
Oh, second.
Discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, let me read a statement on, this is going to be to all Rutland City Public School staff. This will be sent this evening.
(audience cheering)
Hey, I haven't even heard that announcement yet.
(inaudible). It seemed anti-climatic. They saved the standing ovation for your announcement.
This is sort of like telling you what you got for Christmas before you open it. So, let me read, let me read the statement. To all, this is going to, this evening to all Rutland City Public School staff, and Jim, this will be the, I know you're out there somewhere, official statement for, and I can give you this too. This is to all Rutland City Public School staff, "On behalf of the Rutland City Board of School Commissioners, I am pleased to announce that William Bill Olson has been selected by the Board as the next Superintendent of Rutland City Public Schools effective July 1st, 2020. Bill is a consummate educational leader and principled person. He has served as Principal of Rutland High School since 2009 and was Assistant Principal at Rutland Middle School for four years prior to joining the high school administrative team. Bill holds a BA in Economics from College of the Holy Cross, an MA in Teaching from Boston College, and a Certificate of Advanced Graduate Study and Education Administration from Castleton University. In the coming months, Bill will work with interim Superintendent Dave Walk to transition to his new position when Dave's assignment ends on June 30. This presents a unique transitional opportunity whereby the future superintendent has mentoring time with the incumbent to help acclimate to his new responsibilities. A search for the next principal of Rutland High School for the 2020-2021 academic year will begin immediately. Superintendent Walk will lead this search. I hope you will join the Board in congratulating Bill Olson on his selection as the next leader for Rutland City Public Schools."
(audience cheering)
Dave, would you like to say a couple of?
Well, Bill, you are one of the most outstanding, impressive educators and human beings I've ever known, and so I'm really pleased for the Rutland City Schools and all of our children that you are who you are, where you are, and I just hope that very quickly you'll be able to correct all the transgressions of your immediate predecessor. Good luck with that.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the regular agenda consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the previous meetings, personnel memorandum number 6007, approval of technology purpose purchases. So, was there, you wanted the, you were, Erin wanted the approval of technology purchases taken off the consent agenda?
Yes.
You wanted that to be separate?
Yes, like, or just have a discussion about it, however you.
Well, it would have to have come off the consent agenda because we don't have the discussion on the consent agenda.
That's good.
So, is, it would agreement that the motion then would be to approve the consent agenda, which would include the minutes of the previous meeting and personnel memorandum number 607?
With one exception, minus the second appointment in the nonlicensed section.
Okay, minus the second appointment in the nonlicensed section, all right. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Any debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, so the next item is the approval of the technology purchases, which is in your packet, so if I could have a motion to approve that.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so now, discussion, Erin.
So, you know, I sort of ask this every year, when are we going to become one-to-one computing for the students? And we invested a lot in technology, so I guess I want to know the updated status of one-to-one computing, and I really believe students should have a computer to use, whether at school daily or something that they might be able to bring home. I think it'd be an asset for all our students. And so, I want to kind of know where that's going, and I know we upgrade and get through the, go through the computers, so we have current technology, but I don't know that it's always being used all the time in the right capacity for the student's benefit.
I don't, I mean, I don't have the answer to that question. Patricia, is she out here?
I'm right here.
Oh, there you are.
I know you are. How's everybody this evening? It's so nice to see you.
Tired.
I'm sure. So, how are you? So, we are in a very good situation with our one-to-one computing, in that we are one-to-one every place except kindergarten. And we deploy Chromebooks, so every kid has access to a machine. We also allow high schoolers to take Chromebooks home, they can check them out at the library. So, some kids are taking advantage of that. They don't have the technology at home.
So, daily in classes, I mean, not every class, you know, is going to need it, but are there computers assigned to students daily they can log into to their Google account?
Absolutely, yes.
So, each classroom has that, and that's being applied?
Yes, mhm.
From 1 through 12?
Yes.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
And then, what about middle school students for being able to take technology home?
So, so it was an experiment to see a demand at the high school level, and to see how many students actually took equipment home. It was not a lot of students. So, that's, so, so one of the things we need to discuss is whether or not we want technology to come, go home, and then what systems are in place to do that. So, we haven't sustained any types of damage or had any issues with high schoolers taking equipment home, so that's been very positive, the ones that have checked machines out.
And how are you promoting this to the students? Because I feel like, you know, there's a need, I would assume, for students to access this at home, and, you know, especially with sports, so many children are in sports, they could access it in between or where they may or may not be if they're not at home. So, how is it promoted to the students? Maybe you guys can speak to it.
As far as being able to take a machine home from the library, it's, it's been in the announcements every day at the beginning of school. I don't, I can't tell you if it's in the announcements today, but it has been in the written announcements in September, October, November, December, so, and I, I requested that it be in the announcements, so, at the high school level. If, sometimes kids see something repeatedly because it gets, you know, when it gets edited, they're looking for new information and people do miss it. I can't say that it was in yesterday, one of the principals would have to.
Okay, any other questions? So, the motion then is that the Board of School Commissioners accept the price quotation of $47,200 for 50 HP Elite Book 850 G6 laptop computers from Ormspeed Computer Systems to be effective for fiscal year 2020. That is the motion, and we have a second. Any other questions? And all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Abstentions? Okay, all right, then that motion carries. Thank you, Patricia.
Thank you.
All right, we now move on to communications. I'm going to start asking the Superintendent to address the audience and the board.
Thank you, be glad to do that. I'd like to ask Patty Beaumont and Jack Adams to come forward and have a seat right here. We're going to talk about the Rutland Middle School History Program, and want to start with a statement to the community on behalf of the school district. There are many lessons here that we have learned and will always continue to learn. I want to say that the teachers who have been teaching this unit, hoping to make history come alive for students, have been doing so for several years. You're going to hear more details about that, and the purpose is to try to make history come alive. But personally, I just want to say to the community that I am very sorry for the discomfort and the outright pain that has been, that some people have felt, and I want to, want to acknowledge that as the leader of the school district, that obviously no one intended harm, and I'm very sorry that that was the case for, for some people. And I've asked the principal and one of the teachers, Jack Adams, who's been teaching this unit for a long time, to come here and be totally transparent, to tell the truth, always the best policy, and, and to learn from this lesson, and to move on on behalf of all students. The last thing I wanted to say is that the, public may not know this, but the school board led an effort to learn more about implicit bias. In early January, we were very fortunate to have Boar Yang, who is a lawyer and the Executive Director of the Vermont Human Rights Commission, come here and conduct a training for the school board members and for district leaders. It was very effective. And some of that training is being extended now to the school community. I know that, that she will be at the Rutland High School Global Issues Conference in April, maybe attending a faculty meeting. I know that Patty in the middle school is going to be extending an invitation as well, because I, I learned a lot, and I know you all did too, and sometimes we're not aware of the bias, I guess that's why it's called implicit bias, but our job is to make sure in all of our schools that faculty and staff have sort of a new vision now in the world that has changed in the seven years since you've been teaching this program at the middle school. So, with that, I'd like to ask you to tell the truth and tell it well. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for framing it so well. Hello, everybody. I guess to start, it's a fairly, you know, lengthy story, so we're going to give kind of a general overview, and then feel free to ask questions afterwards, okay? And we're happy to answer anything. But basically, we did in fact receive a letter of complaint from the Rutland Area Branch of the NAACP, and in that complaint, it was due to an activity on colonialism, slavery, and black history. So, that's basically what we are going to talk about, is that complaint. Jack, we'll go ahead and tell a little bit about the unit of study that our social studies teachers, and Jack is our tech teacher, and he's helped with this for a long time, so.
And I'm Jack Adams, I am a technology integrationist at the middle school, but social studies is my love, and I've been involved with this project since we've been doing it for seven or eight years now. It's something that's developed over time, it's something that the entire social studies department has worked on. The idea, it's a simulation of the colonial trade triangle, from England to Africa to the colonies, where students in, physically in different areas, representing colonists, representing the West Indies, representing African slave traders, representing English merchants, have goods that they are selling, cotton, indigo, including slaves represented as, the different, you know, there's pictures of, of cotton, there's pictures of indigo, there's pictures of guns from the English traders. The, the representative icon for the slave represent, slave trade is advertisement from the time period, a primary source, slave auction flyer.
Poster.
Poster, yes. That represents, you know, talks about a specific ship, the slaves coming off that ship being for sale. We, at no point were we trading, we've been trading, and all the goods are represented by these slips of paper, it's not a matter of trading people or things other than a slips of paper. The idea is that the different areas have their goods that they need to sell, they have their goods that they need to buy to supply their people, lumber from the New England colonies coming to England, finished goods like furniture and guns and things like that coming from England to the West Indies, to the, to the colonies, cotton going from the southern colonies to England, slaves from Africa to the West Indies and to the southern colonies, and students representing the merchants are actually moving from place to place. There's the physical separation. What we're trying to set up is not specifically focusing on slavery, we're focusing on the colonial mercantile system that was controlled by England, so that the kids can understand it's leading up to the revolution. Our intent is to lead them to the, the point of understanding why the colonists were fed up with being controlled by the English, being, having to work with the English merchants, not being able to develop their own industries and their own goods, and feeling that frustration, through that emotion, feeling some understanding that. Part of it also includes the, the emotion of trading human beings, and understanding and recognizing how the slave trade was a horrific part of US history. Not the main focus, but part of the focus. We do it in a series of rounds, starting in the late 1600s to represent trade that was going on then, then we have a second round, sometimes we've only done it in two rounds, but leading up to things like the dumping of tea in Boston Harbor, the blockade of Boston Harbor, the letters of course, the committee of correspondence between the northern colonies and the southern colonies, trying to recreate the things that were happening in historical context, and having them feel that emotion and be involved in those trades and in that process, to get to the point where feeling, in many cases, that we're ready to, we're ready to rebel now. When we've done this simulation, well, we have a group of kids who are ready to rebel against England and ready to fight a revolution. That's been the goal over, over the years. It's not, it's, again, like I said, it's not focused as a slave trade, slave trading activity, it's not focused, it just happened coincidentally, coincidentally be happening during February, it's not something we've done as part of black history or anything like that in the past, it's just that's when it happened to be falling at this time. The main emphasis is understanding the roots of the American Revolution.
So, with that said, a few of the students, a parent and a grandparent actually, were concerned with particularly, with the unit in general, but particularly with the slip of paper that Jack just depicted of the primary source that had the slaves coming over from Africa, the enslaved people coming over from Africa to the new colonies. So, they brought that concern to their parents and guardians, the students did, which now, tonight, I will kind of veer to tonight a little bit, but we had a meeting, the four teachers, Rob Bliss and myself, with Tabitha Paul Moore, who is the President of the Rutland Chapter of the NAACP. I thought we had a really productive meeting, and I think Tabitha was able to really help us to understand this disequilibrium that we think is really powerful for learning for students, is powerful, but it can also trigger so many negative emotions from people who've had any kind of trauma experienced with the subject that you're talking about. So, I think that that's where we now do truly apologize to those students, their families, and just everybody really, for an unintended consequence that occurred. Teachers met with those, those families, we have been able to talk with Tabitha about ways that we can move forward with this. There were about five families who articulated concerns, but again, we really are looking this, at this much more holistically, so we now are thinking, how can we write a letter to our greater, the greater group, to all the families who were affected in, in our community, so that they understand the why behind it, and they understand how we're going to progress moving forward. Really about how do you change your lens when you're thinking about anything that has to do with social justice and inequities in curriculum? So, that's going to be a lot of our focus. Different ways, so one of the questions that came up was, knowing that this is an issue today, we still have a social studies curriculum to teach from now until the end of the year that has to do with American history. So, feeling like we really need some support with that, what could we do? So, Tabitha helped us to, she gave us some sources that we can look at now, so that we can really start to change our own lenses as teachers and learners, to be receptive to the needs of all of our students, and then thinking about in the summer, some possibilities for professional development that we can move forward with. And Mr. Walk already talked about the implicit bias, bias training, which we'd like to start before, before that. We also had a faculty meeting today, and during the faculty meeting, we read some implicit bias kind of, an article actually, that was written by a person back in the late 1900s, and, that sounded weird, the late 1900s.
That did sound weird.
But it was, it is true. And had a discussion about that, it was more from the lens of a white woman and her, her white, her whiteness and how, how she felt about being a woman, but, anyway.
We did, we were contacted by parents, and we had meetings, face-to-face meetings with some of those parents, we had phone conversations with some of those parents. There was some misinformation about how the, how the simulation itself was working. We tried to clarify any misunderstandings there were about the actual process of the, of the simulation, and we talked with all of the parents, and we had very positive conversations, I felt, the ones I was involved in, were positive conversations. We, we weren't as sensitive as we needed to be, we made mistakes in how we did things. We're looking for ways to do that better, and we asked, including Ms. Paul Moore this evening, how can people in the community help us to understand that, that lens that Tabitha talked about, understanding how the way we're perceiving things is, needs to be different, and how we need to do things better? And for the most part, the folks we've talked with have been very positive and willing to help us to understand, how do we need to do this better?
Questions that you might have?
So, I just had a question in regarding, so I understand this was an exercise, what was the framework surrounding it? Was there any discussion on the dehumanization of slaves and the slave trade process? Was any, what was taught outside this lesson?
And I'm going to relate what I understand my colleagues did, because I wasn't involved in this particular part. There was talk about the horrors of the, of the passage, there was talk about impact on African demographics and how it changed culture in Africa. There was converse, there was instruction prior to it about the slave trade, about many of the things that you're talking about. I can't tell you specifically what some of those things were, I know that there was, it wasn't just, here we go into the simulation, there was some instruction about slaves trade specifically, leading up to the simulation. Did that clarify for you?
Yeah.
Thank you. Joan, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, further on that, so is that, I mean, this piece of curriculum, is that part of the curriculum? I mean, the preparatory discussion about what is going to happen?
Yes.
That's part of?
Yes, and that's developed over time, as I say, we, as we've done this over years, that's part that has developed over time. This is something we've created, we've taken the idea of the simulation from others and other places, but we've done a lot in, you know, amongst ourselves as we've developed this over time, and that, that pre-teaching of the conditions and of the existence of the slave has been part of what's developed over time, yes.
And the slavery portion is really a small part of it. It's really about the economic.
To you.
Yeah, correct, exactly.
Right, oh, understood, yes.
And I'm sorry, can I clarify, please?
Yes, of course.
I didn't mean as small as an incidental, I meant it, it is not the focus necessarily of the unit of study. So, it's more, how did David talk about it?
It's more about the economic system, and the, the driving question is, how did the econ, the colonial trade triangle lead to economic situations that led to the American Revolution?
Maybe how the slave trade led to American prosperity.
Which is a perspective that Ms. Paul Moore brought up, and again, adjusting that lens and identifying where my lens isn't as good a lens as it could be, as I, as I view these things.
And that's absolutely the training that we, we need to have.
So, you're talking about the training, but this is a systematic issue, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm wondering about, and maybe this is something, Dave, a question for you, is how will we, you know, create a system to analyze more curriculum? You know, just build this in systematically so these things don't happen, rather than just, and by the way, I want to say something, the openness is, thank you for coming here and being honest with us, because this kind of stuff is going to arise, and we don't want to sweep it under the rug, you know, people make mistakes, so I'm not, there's not condemnation here, except for when you know better, you do better, right? Isn't that what?
And that's what we're seeking to do, exactly what we're seeking to do, yep.
So, how do we, you know, create a system where we can do better?
So, the world has changed, and as we look at.
Well, maybe our perception has changed, but this shit.
So, what I'm saying is that we are now, and should be, sensitive to these issues, not just at Rutland Middle School, but throughout the whole district. So, Rob and the principals work with the teachers in developing curriculum and adjusting curriculum, and given what we have learned about implicit bias and what we have learned from this lesson, I think that that will allow each of the schools to modify the curriculum and to make sure it's connected K to 12, which is an ongoing, ongoing work here. So, I can't say specifically which unit will change in what ways, but I think there's going to be a new lens.
So, if I may just add on to, to what Dave just said, Tabitha did lay out some things, and I know that she's going to bring some of this information to the board, I believe. So, I don't want to preempt anything, but some ongoing consultation, for example, where we can start to put together a methodology of looking at our curriculum through that lens, and she was very quick, and I think rightfully so, to say, people have to change. So, when you're changing people, it takes time. So, this is summer work that's going, going to happen, this isn't, you know, a long-term, she said summer, I don't know, I don't have that authority, but you know, it's, it's more of a long-term process. So, she did have some suggestions, as I said before, of some vendor, vendors or, you know, some, some, not vendors actually, like teaching tolerance, some different groups that have curriculum that we could use in the meantime to, to, to have that lens, if you will, because others have created that, that unit. Most of our social studies units are created by teachers, you know, our teachers, so they take things from here and there, and then they, they create their unit of study that way. So, this would be more of something that's already been vetted by, by lots of people, but doing that training, she talked about a teaching while white. Lisa Ryan is a woman in our community who does restorative circles and restorative practices, that type of thing, you know, with, with kind of an idea of how do we change our lenses as educators?
And there will be a presentation at the March Board Meeting, from what I understand.
Allison?
I'd like to make a motion, or suspend the rules.
You have to suspend the rules.
About the discussion, it's communication, so it wasn't directly on the agenda. But I, I'd like to suspend the rules, make a motion, and I would like to, the Board to direct the Superintendent to form a Diversity and Equity Council. I think this council will be a multidisciplinary committee to review the current culture, practice, and perceptions, and promote awareness. Who would be involved? I think there should be Board representation, curriculum coordinators, teachers, students from RHS, RMS, paraeducators, special educators, guidance, custodians, counselors. I think all buildings should be represented in some capacity, and the why is highlighted here. I mean, we need to identify areas for improvement, educational opportunities, programming, we need to develop support and resource systems, and we need to build community capacity and understanding around these matters. We can't keep having issues come up and they're a lack of education or sensitivity. So, my motion would be for the Board to direct the Superintendent to form a Diversity and Equity Council.
Yeah, first we have to have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Suspend the rules?
Yeah.
Yes.
Aye.
All right, okay, so that was your motion?
My motion, yep, would be to direct the Superintendent to form a Diversity and Equity Council for Rutland City Public Schools.
A second.
All right, discussion.
I just had a question in terms of, because I think we do have the administrative and the other stuff, how do they coordinate? So, I, I support the principal, I just don't want competing organizations trying to do the same thing. So, if there's some way to narrow it so that the Superintendent can incorporate it with existing structures, or do you want it to be an independent that comes out with a report, for example?
I would think it would be, I mean, we'd obviously, I, I think that might have to come up with a council and what the recommendations are, and what the reporting system would exactly be. I know we changed special ed to, that could be inequality, so would this be something that would, would fall under, under that reporting system? Would it report to the Board? Would it report to this Superintendent? I think that depends on the direction. I think that depends on the direction, because we'd need to figure out reporting system and we need to figure out empowerment. But I think first of all, we need to get the right people at the table to start the conversations.
Point of order, um, and I support your motion, but I think that would have to go to policy first because I think our policy outlines our, even our activities council, right?
I, I would. We don't do ad hoc, we do ad hoc.
If it's an ad hoc committee, it can be appointed by the, by the board chair.
Right, if it's an ad hoc, but it wouldn't be a per.
Like the hiring committees, we don't, we don't do that with anything else.
Unless it's a standing committee, then you would. Dina, and then Erin?
I think, uh, to support Allison's, um, um, motion, it's to illustrate our prioritization of this as a district, is not to shed any bl- blame or fault or, 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 um, saying that there's an intentional systematic issue. It's just for us to say, this is becoming a priority for our district now. And not looking at it as, as an itemized issue in islands, but more as our person who did our, our bias training has, um, discussed it as a culture and a system, not a case-by-case issue. And that's, I think, producing some, something like that, that includes also community members and parents and something that maybe not go completely overboard with how many people are in this entity, but that drives us as a district and connect to the community with, with that initiative. And I think you guys being here is, is the starting point. Your, your, this incident can be the, the, the jumping board of us really putting our, 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 our kinda hard to wear, we've been talking about it for a while, but really putting the, the focus on it right now.
Uh, Erin and then Allison?
So I think I kind of go with Cam in some sense of, I absolutely support the idea, but maybe alter the most, motion to state, you know, we direct the superintendent and administration to come back to us with some sort of proposal on what that would look like versus us sort of demanding to have this in place. So we're, we're requesting you to come back with a proposal, what it would look like, how we implement it, how we incorporate the community. I think that's a really good way to take this and make it a priority, and I think what you said was spot on, so. We want this community to grow and thrive, so, yeah.
I think you were next, and then, no, I'm sorry, Allison and then Joanne, thank you.
So, and I, I, you know, there's a sentiment there, like this, this certainly brought it forward, but I also do credit is to the New Neighbors Club that came before us last year. And the kids told us then that this was a need. And I feel that now we have had, you know, another incident. It's not about incidents, it's about a system and, and preventing and being proactive and looking out for our students' best interests in any way that we can.
Joanne?
So, um, I agree with all of this in spirit. But there's a couple of, uh, implementation operational things in terms of workload and that sort of thing with teachers. And, um, also there's gonna, they're gonna need resources for this. So I'd be interested, and, and, and it's gotta come from money, right? We, we gotta give resources to it. And I don't know whether that would come from Cam's contingency fund that he loves so much. But, and, and I, I would, and also apply for grants, exactly, and there would be grants, um, I'm sure. But, um, yeah, I, I, I like charging the administration to come up with the plan for the committee rather than us saying there'll be, who will be on it.
The motion was for, to direct the superintendent to form a diversity and equity council. That's what the motion is. That was just kind of a what, who and why to explain.
We have to figure out money, too. We have to give them the resources.
Erin?
To the.
Andrew, have your hand up? Oh, I'm sorry, Erin?
To the resource point and to all the staff. I mean, I think we have an incredible staff, every, there's so many great people out there. So I, I would feel, again, incorporating the, the community of the staff we have here at RHS to, to really come up with what that would look like, because you're already doing so much. And we have so many resources, we're already allocating to professional development, to bias, to just improving the student's experience and also being learners yourselves. And that's what I love about so many of you, you're always learning. So, you know, Ben, you guys are the ones on the ground floor, you're, you're doing it. So you would know best how this should look. So again, I kinda feel that, I love it in theory, so how we phrase it is, is great. But I'd like, before it forms, to come back with a model, a system of what it's gonna look like before it launches, if that makes any sense.
Dave?
Yes.
Well, I wanted to make sure the board members had a chance, um, everybody. So what I, what I would say is that, um, I absolutely agree with the spirit of it, the intent of it, but it's first I've heard of it. So I would like to, um, include, uh, the leadership in the district and consult with other people, figure out how we can integrate it with what we're doing now. And, uh, whether it's a diversity council, and I'm not opposed to the idea, or what approach we take, we'll take it seriously in terms of the resources. We integrate it with the other things we're doing. It won't require, uh, increased resources because it's part of our culture and change and it's who we are. So don't worry about that part. I just, because I've only been thinking about it for ten minutes, I don't really know exactly the right approach. And I wanna consult with people who are smarter than me, and that's pretty much everybody on the leadership council. So I'd, you know, I'd like to, uh, if you wanna pass a motion to ask us to put something together for the next meeting, I absolutely will do, will do that. I just don't know what the right approach is right now. Having a council may be the right approach.
Um, getting back to the policy and the reason why I brought policy up is, I don't see it as temporary. The only thing that the board chair can do is appoint a temporary ad hoc committee. I'm just reading the policy here. So I do think that if this is something that we, we.
It's not a board committee. It is not a board committee.
So then therefore there'll be no appointment of board members?
Boards can serve on it, but it is not a board committee.
So it would not be a committee, and there would be no more than five, because then we would constitute a quorum of our full board.
Correct.
So if five show up, who are, who are you gonna pick not to, who are you gonna pick to lead? I mean, that's what I'm saying.
That would have to be in the design of it.
Well, that.
And I don't think it's appropriate to hold it up to go before policy, just like last year we held everything up 'cause it was going to go to flag policy. And then nothing ever happens. I think things need to move forward. And I think to say that, that we can't do this because we can't create, we're not, we're not directing, we're not creating a board equity and diversity committee.
Why aren't we?
Well, we could do that.
I agree.
And then that has to go to policy, but.
We could do an ad hoc while it goes to policy.
That's right. It has to eventually go to policy.
I don't think that it needs to be the board overseeing it. I think it needs to be in the front lines, in the hands of the administrators, the students, the teachers, the people with the day-to-day interactions and know what's going on in the schools. We don't know till it hits the Rutland Herald or our children. So I don't think it's a committee that the board itself needs to do. And to empower the superintendent to research and come back with a best practice model is in our purview without going to policy.
I, I agree.
Okay.
I, I don't think we should get mired down right now and trying to figure this out, the nuts and bolts. It's definitely a frontlines thing. Um, it's gonna be a living, breathing entity, as it should be, because we're trying to change and move forward. Could we call it a working group? And, you know, five board members, we won't, you know, I, I don't think that's gonna be a problem to have.
To not have five.
A quorum.
Dina?
What Allison just said is the right wording, I think. Just bring, like, come forward with the rights, uh, with, with what appears or, based on research, present to us the right, uh, best practice to pursue something like this. Whatever title we wanna then give it to, give to it, that's technicalities in my mind, but, um, but I think I, I, I support the, the notion that, of, of feeling like we've been talking about it for a while and we feel like we wanna s- move forward a little bit more clearly and, and not just, uh, in theory, but in the representation of it on the ground, the troops on the ground type of thing.
Allison, can you read that again, please?
The motion would be the board to direct the superintendent to form a diversity and equity council.
So that, that's the motion. So unless there's an amendment to that motion by the individual making the motion, that's the motion on the floor.
I suggested we amend it to have them come back with a proposal to the board, so then we can say, yes, this is, like, the direction. These are the people that are gonna be on it, from the, the people on the ground. Because that, they're gonna be able to make that more definitive for us, in my opinion.
Joanne?
Yeah, make a friendly.
Yes.
Council or working group?
So, I mean, I could amend the motion, say that we, um, the board directs the superintendent to form a committee to review diversity and equity, or a diversity and equity work group.
Could it just be to propose, for the, um.
Propose?
For them to propose a plan for.
Yeah.
Creating a.
Best practice approach for, I'm sorry.
Maybe they bring a proposal for, just make a proposal for.
Now you can see why doing anything by committee really just.
Yeah, it's not fun.
We, we could sit here, folks, for the next two hours, talking about how we're gonna create this thing. And I don't know about you, I don't wanna sit here for the next two hours, so can we try to wrap this up?
Can we not call it creating it? Can we just say a commitment to having a discussion at the next board meeting or whatever?
Proposal.
To.
Well, Allison offered an am- an amendment to her motion, correct?
Could you read your, your motion now, Allison?
The gist of what I'm getting everyone would agree to might be, I would amend my motion to say, I would like the board to direct the superintendent to propose a diversity and equity council.
Okay, so that, that's Allison's amendment to her motion.
Would you add and report back to the board?
Yes.
So the amendment includes the.
I would like the board to direct the superintendent, propose to the board.
The board directs the superintendent. The board directs the superintendent.
Board to direct a superintendent, to propose to the board, the makeup of a, or the.
Formation.
Formation, formation of a diversity and equity council.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, yep.
All right, is there any more discussion?
I thought we were gonna add and re- report back to the board.
And report back.
Propose to the board, so the proposing to us.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Hope I never have to write a novel with your people.
No one will read our novel.
All right.
Except for Big Bird.
Back to communications. Is there anyone else, uh, to lay out? Yes. Just state your name and your residence.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Kowetski. I live on Roberts Avenue here in Rutland. I was here before you in October about, uh, data that was coming through from the state about how children, um, disabled children had higher levels in Rutland. And I asked that you all, uh, go to the Department of Health and find out why that was going on. At that time, President Corcel sent me an email and said, we already discussed that last year, it's off, we're not doing it. And, um, that was the end of it. I don't know if it was ever discussed after that fact with you, but three people went through the minutes of the previous year and never found the discussion up. And according to open law, um, open meeting laws, that that's really not the way it's supposed to go. So I'm back with more data. And so what I wanna tell you today is, I don't know if you're looking at data or if you even read the, the project that I did put forward. But I'm, I'm going by two thousand and seventeen Vermont youth risk behavior. I don't know if the board looks at that. Two thousand and nineteen is now out, but it's not specific to Rutland, that will be coming out. But this is specific to Rutland from two thousand and seventeen. Only twenty-five percent of the Rutland middle schoolers strongly agree that they matter to people in their community. Middle schoolers. The number of middle schoolers that were, were, uh, that did the survey was twelve hundred and fifteen. The number of high school schoolers, it's voluntary and anonymous, was, uh, two thousand and seventy-four. So it's a significant number. So by the time the high schoolers come around to surveying, so it's a different, it's, it's the high school of that same year, only seventeen percent of Rutland high schoolers strongly agree that they matter to their community. I think that's pretty sad, really. Now, how do you relate to that? That's, that's mental, mental issues possibly in the future. How could it happen? Forty-three percent of middle schoolers get no physical activity breaks while they are at school. We all know that physical activity makes us feel better. So that's one piece of data. Only, um, number, nine percent of the middle schoolers surveyed did not participate in physical activities any day. That number is raised to thirteen percent of high schoolers did not participate in physical activities any day. Twenty-three percent of middle schoolers played video games or used the computer five hours or more a day. Fifty percent of the middle schoolers played video or used the computer more than three hours a day. Fifty-four percent of high schoolers, so you're talking about half the high schoolers now are using, um, the computer three or more hours a day, and twenty-two percent of the high schoolers used it for more than five hours a day. So there's, what's going on here in Rutland, according to the two seventeen, two thousand and seventeen report? From what I see is that our kids are not outside enough doing physical activity. And I know, I'm not blaming the teachers, I'm blaming, I'm saying it's a systemic problem, but I think it has to be addressed that kids need to have activities to feel better. Why? I feel okay, even though I felt that I was blown off here and you didn't even follow the law doing it. So if I can feel that way as an adult, I'm just concerned about what's going on with the kids for their mental health because we don't have enough mental health counselors here to meet the kids' need. So what I'm asking you is to please consider making physical, physical, getting physical activity back into your school programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Anyone else like to address the board on matters on the agenda? All right, so we're gonna spike the lateness, move on. Student representatives, do you still remember what you were gonna say?
Hi, um, so I apologize, I'm just getting over a cold, so my voice is a little wavering. From northeast and northwest, uh, winter has definitely settled in at Northwest School and staff take opportunities to provide fun winter experiences for students. Recently, Northwest students enjoyed an all-school celebration with a sledding and hot cocoa party. This celebration occurred because many classes met their behavioral goals over the course of several weeks, earning stars for each of their classrooms. Children knew that once the whole school earned a certain number of stars, they would enjoy a sledding party. What a fun day for all. Today, the fun continued as Northwest students enjoyed their annual winter carnival at Giorgetti Park, coordinated by physical education teacher Brian Capoli. In regard to family engagement, Northwest had a great turnout of about one hundred and fifty people at a recent movie night in the Northwest Gym. And this Wednesday, February twelfth, Northwest looks forward to an evening of decorating Valentine's Day, Valentine's and cookies together with families. That's at five thirty PM in the Northwest Gym. Northwest's End of January Hero Assembly featured our very own Kate Bosnick, tapestry director for our district. Kate talked to children about the character traits chill and assertiveness and how these traits are called upon in her tapestry work. Finally, thanks to efforts by Northwest teacher Phoebe Foreman, Northwest and Northeast schools teamed up for their I Love Rutland campaign, delivering homemade Valentines to the storefronts of local businesses to show a little love for our city. From RIS, um, RIS students and teachers have been working hard to follow Raider Way, and we are pleased to report that they have earned their second whole-school PBIS celebration this school year. Our PTO generously donated the prizes for our students to win during the school-wide bingo game played in our community block. And from RMS, Mrs. Tobin's fax class had a fantastic trip to Stafford, visiting their food programs and getting a chance to cook pizza for the famous dollhouse restaurant. She will bring the remainder of her eighth graders to Stafford Technical Center on March sixth. On Monday and Tuesday of this week, all students enjoyed skating at Spartan. On Monday and Tuesday of this week, all students enjoyed skating at Spartan Arena. And last week, some middle schoolers enjoyed a presentation by Dr. Jay Rotella, professor at Montana State University, and his daughter Sophie talk about his trips to Antarctica where he studies the behavior of seals and killer whales. Thanks to Erica Walstrom for bringing this enriching program to RMS. And finally, from Stafford, Stafford will be heading to PICO on Thursday for our annual ski day. Students and staff will have the opportunity to ski, snowboard, snowshoe, or swim. Skiing and snowboarding lessons are available to those new to the sport. Off-duty Rutland City firefighters join us and help out with the ski lessons. A wonderful day for the school community. For the past one and a half weeks, we have been hosting applicants for the 2020, 2021 school year for program visits. As part of each application, students must visit the program they have applied to and interview with the instructor. We currently have 370 submitted applications for the 277 available spaces for next year. Is that it?
Hannah?
For Rutland High School, the Special Olympics Winter Games will be held at PICO Monday, March 23rd and Tuesday, March 24th. Please fill out the form by Wednesday, February 12th and see Mrs. Non-Fahy with any questions. The 12th Annual Suples for Hunger will be held on March 12th at 4:45 and 6:15 PM. Tickets are $20 each and can be purchased in the RHS main office. Rutland High School would like to congratulate the two leaders for winning three competitions in a row in the best of luck, best of luck estates this weekend. Also, congratulations to John Carter for placing first and Ethan Schmidt for placing third in the speech and debate competition this past weekend.
Great. Thank you. All right. Moving on, we have our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Bliss, who's going to walk us through the supervision and evaluation process update. So Rob, I will turn that over to you.
Thanks so much for the opportunity to come here and for the community to see a brief overview of our supervision and evaluation process. In your packet, you had some slides. And also, just as an example for you, one of the pieces are evaluation tools for counselors. And so that's just a reference to show you that we have a different tool for just about every different professional and support staff area. Working through the slides, just so you can see, I'll go through a brief presentation and take any questions at the end. So this is the key right here. The purpose of all of our supervision and evaluation process is literally to improve the teaching and learning process. That's it. So the reason we do what we do is to make sure we're trying to do the best that we can to improve what we do in the classroom so our students and our families and our community get the best we can. If you pop down two slides, the one that says foundational documents and research, by rule, every evaluative piece that somebody has in the state of Vermont, you have to base it on some kind of foundational document. For us, we use John Safier's Research for Better Teaching as well as Charlotte Danielson's Framework for Effective Teaching. And then the next few slides are examples of, the frameworks, like Danielson's framework, offer everybody to have what I would call a common language for understanding what high-quality teaching looks like and what the evidence of those things are. So in each one of our supervision and evaluation documents, there is a rubric modeled after or actually just taken from Danielson as to what it is when we're looking for high-quality instruction. Or, in this case, the first one is school nursing. The next one is school counselor. And then following that is support staff. And so in each case, it gives us a chance to have a common language and discussion about what high-quality work looks like as opposed to us getting to a mid-year or year-end evaluation just saying, "Yeah, I don't think you did very well," or "Golly gee, you're great." This way, everybody understands what the goals are and what we're looking to strive to achieve. So our evaluation cycle is a five-year cycle. And I want to talk a little bit about the critical point, two critical points. One is probationary teachers for the first two years, they're under a comprehensive evaluation process. We're making sure we're cultivating the highest-quality staff we can get and keeping them on board. And then after that, if we have high-quality teachers, we expect them to be professionals, set their goals in collaboration with their supervisors, and keep growing. I'm going to bounce through process vocabulary, which is there for your benefit in case you need it. I spoke a little bit about comprehensive evaluation. That's intensive for teachers who are new to us and/or are going around at the end of their five-year cycle. And I'm going to skip way, way down to almost the end to get to the point where you see a list of the evaluation committee. And I'm going to jump to that because our evaluation committee is not unique to Vermont. Every school and district has to have an evaluation committee. And we met yesterday as a team. We meet quarterly, and on the event that we're doing any more intensive work, we meet more regularly. That committee includes central office, building principal and leadership, teachers, nurses, counselors. And it's real interesting, depending on the work we're taking up, we get more participation from that group. So if we're looking at the counselor evaluation process, we have counselors who become interested in being part of the committee. This year, the big piece of work we're taking up is we're looking again at our comprehensive evaluation and supervision process for teachers. And we're starting to work to look at that to make it, in the words of one of our committee members, more meaningful to our faculty in terms of the feedback they're getting. Right now, when we get down to comprehensive evaluation, it can be pretty stilted and artificial in terms of a teacher putting on the best show they possibly can for 45 to 60 minutes. And we're looking at models that are closer to more frequent mini-walkthroughs and observations and more ongoing conversation about what high-quality instruction is and looks like. None of this is short work or easy work. It is all intense work and it is critical work. And I want you to know, in terms of checking the quality of the work, the superintendent and I read every single evaluative document. When I came here, I didn't need glasses, now I do. And we, as an administrative cabinet, we look at our own work on a regular basis. It's not a standing agenda item on the cabinet meetings that we have monthly, but it comes up frequently. It's called learning from our work, where we will look at some of our own work, critique it in a professional learning community model, and try to learn from each other as best we can about the best work we can do. And I would just close by saying, once again, that the most important part of this is all of our supervision and evaluation is targeted at trying to make sure we're always improving in teaching and learning.
Okay, question. Rob had a pretty comprehensive packet, package that he put together in the board packet, which included a lot of the tools and a lot of the forms that are used as part of that assessment process. So I would encourage you, if you haven't reviewed that, it's a lot of good material in there. So questions for Rob with respect to the professional evaluation process or outcomes?
And I would add, I could also take a phone call anytime.
Absolutely, yeah. All right. Certainly, I want to emphasize what Rob had said, and he's done this presentation before, how important that evaluative process is in particular, you know, as new teachers come on, how teachers are mentored, reviewed, but also for teachers that have been doing it for a while to have that regular rigor in terms of how they're approaching their curriculum and the students. So thanks, Rob, for that. All right, so move right on to central office reports, and that would be superintendent, please.
So I have one report under superintendent and then the next three, and I'll try to be as succinct as Rob was. So, first of all, now that we have a real superintendent, we will need to look for the next principal of Rutland High School. And I'm going to be convening a screening and interview committee. The membership will include four school board members, including Ann Dejes, Allison Knott, Matt Olenek, and Aaron Schimp, along with some teachers, parent, students, and others representing the school community. This committee will screen and interview applicants. It will be an extensive search. The posting of the position will take place on February 25th. The application deadline will be March 13th. The committee will meet organizationally, will screen applications, start the interview process. The end of it will be school board consideration of the superintendent's recommended candidate and the next superintendent will be part of that process at the end as well, although will not be on the committee. And that would be April 7th. So just letting people know that it will be a search that will include board members and the community. And of course, all deliberations will be confidential. That's number one. Next, we have an election coming up on March 3rd. And I just wanted the board to know that, as in the past, there has been a calling to remind folks to go to the polls. We have a lot of Q and A for those who will be calling. We have a new brochure, which I'm very proud of because one of our former students helped to design it with input from a lot of people here. This will go out to the community, encouraging people to vote with a lot of information about the schools. And that will be going out at the end of February. So we'll be reminding people to vote and communicating as best we can about the school system. Should I move along?
Please.
So we've been talking about beautification of the schools, which, for the most part, will be completed by the end of the summer. During the February break, the third floor of the intermediate school will be painted. And this summer, I might have mentioned this before, but the tapestry program will take place at the intermediate school. So we'll really be able top to bottom to paint, clean and paint northeast and northwest. And the other schools are on a schedule. I won't bore you with the schedule, but basically, the whole district will be touched in terms of landscaping, signage, painting, flooring, sprucing everything up. And so I'm very excited about that. And then the last item is the KEIF gym update. Currently, the floor is fully installed. There'll be installation of thresholds and kick plates. Sanding will be done, is being done this week, I guess. They'll be placing the decals on the game lines, urethane. Actually, I'm going to skip all the details just to say that we'll have it done by mid to late March. Maybe painted as well. We can work that into the process because it makes sense to do that while we're in that. So that is my report in case anyone has any questions. Aaron?
Aaron?
So on the beautification, you had mentioned signage. So I guess, you know, will traffic signage be involved in that? Just more directional signage where the offices are and so forth? Because I feel like sometimes it can be busy in places, high school, middle school.
Yes, exterior and interior signage with a common logo.
Yes.
So that everyone knows we're part of a K-12 system.
Right. But there will be sort of like flow, traffic.
Yes.
Perfect.
Of wayfinding, I guess.
All right. Okay, moving on then. Committee meeting schedule. So Hurley, as you know, because we have moved to monthly Board of School Commissioner meetings, the second Tuesday, excuse me, the fourth Tuesday of the month is being held in advance for committee meetings or other work that might need to be done. So a schedule has been set. I believe that all board chairs have been, or committee chairs have been communicated with. But Hurley, if you could just review how, at least it's going to start.
On Tuesday, February 25th, 5:00 PM will be staff relations.
You're all set with that, Allison?
6:00 PM will be building, 7:00 PM will be policy.
We're starting a meeting at 7?
No, it's not policy, we're doing the finance.
Okay.
At 7?
Joanna, am I correct, you were doing the 7 o'clock?
Finance and planning.
No.
Let's start with the send out.
I thought it was policy because we have some policies before the committee. If you want to do four hours straight, we could.
When would it send?
Well, that's too much, I think.
But we had thought, fine.
Start the next month. Is that right, Rob, that you had some, we had some policies to go over?
Was it sent out to us already?
Yes, there's a couple of policies to consider, not of an extremely urgent matter, but at some point, we'll need a policy.
That's fine with me.
That's fine with you?
Wait till March. So Erin, then for your committee, then, that can wait until March? And so this would be finance and planning, then, would be at 7? Okay? So...
Joanna just said that she would be happy to wait till March.
Are you happy to wait till March, Erin?
Yeah, because I actually want to talk to...
That's fine. Are you okay to at least have...
I'm in the dark on this one, I didn't get an email.
Well, it's probably, it's probably because there might have been some confusion with respect to the two committee committees.
I think there was some confusion if it was finance or policy.
I think that's why, yeah. Are you okay with having it at that time?
7 o'clock on a Tuesday night?
It may be a quick meeting, Rob, I don't know. If you don't have a heavy lift, it might be...
Yeah, the email was finance, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why.
That's why.
If you want to start earlier, we could do it at 4.
Yeah, you can do whatever you want with that meeting.
Set it up. Just email the details.
Okay.
I don't care.
All right. You can always, now, keep in mind, these meetings are going to be warned. So we want to make certain that if there are going to be any changes with those meetings, that you notify Sherry and Hurley. And in addition, of course, minutes will be kept on the meetings, and those minutes will be included in the board packet as well. Aaron?
Since we're talking about systems tonight, this is new for all of us. And I'm obviously in the dark, this was not on my radar, I did not get an email, so...
That's because it was confusion.
Right, fine, got that. But going forward, I think we need to have some sort of better communication system for these committees and also schedule. And I don't know if three committee meetings back to back is necessarily the most productive because that's a lot of changing hats and maybe not the best way to do this.
So I think you can work that out as you go on. I probably would agree that that, it's not going to be necessary for all committees to be meeting monthly. I think it's going to be as needed, it's held in advance.
And I think a schedule from each chair probably proposed to the group is probably a nice way to do it.
Yeah.
How much time for the warning?
How much time for what?
Warning meeting.
Four, 48 hours. Come on, you're the parliamentarian now.
So if it's a regular meeting, then, but if it's an ad hoc meeting, it's only 24 hours.
24 hours.
Which seems kind of dumb, but...
So, I mean, within a couple of days, within a couple of days.
Yeah.
All right. So that's what that is. And I think the snafu was obviously on the finance and planning. So Joanne, I'm going to assume that between now and the next time the board meets, you will have had the opportunity to talk with Mary Alma, Dave, and others with respect to the creation of the finance and planning committee and start working on getting that set up. And then you'll have your work ahead of you with the committee chart.
And we'll tell you when the meetings will be.
All right.
And give everyone all the notice.
I have some ideas for you.
Yes, I'm sure he does. All right. So is there any old business to come before the board? I just want to mention, I mean, it's old business because I've mentioned it to the board, but certainly want to at least go public with it. But, so I think I've made it clear to folks that, you know, I'm beginning to start a new volunteer effort this spring that's really going to consume my attention and, of course, with the demands of family and my job. And I've notified the board that I'm going to be stepping down from the Board of School Commissioners in June at the June 9th meeting. I am going to resign as chair at the beginning of that meeting so as to allow the board to have an orderly transition to a new president of the board and depending on what happens there. And then after that meeting, I will step off as a commissioner. The, after 14 years, as I've said, this has been a greatest honor to serve this district, but it's time. So this will be an opportunity for the last few months to be able to help the board get itself, excuse me, set up. Certainly, I'm proud of the work that this board has done over the years. It's been nothing but a great privilege to serve. And with a new superintendent in place, then an opportunity in the next few months to work with Bill and Dave on working through that transition will be good. So I just wanted it out there, the way things would work is the mayor, following my resignation, I'll make this, a formal letter to the mayor and the city clerk. We'll appoint a person to fill my unexpired term, which is March of 2021. And then whoever happens to be in that term will have to run for election at that time. So anyway, because the board knows this, most, my closest, my family certainly and friends know it, but I just wanted to let it know for anybody that did not know that that's when I'll be stepping off. But is there any other old business?
Should we make sure Delvenere's knows?
Yes, key lime pie.
I told them to have the key lime pie ready. I told them to have the key lime pie yet.
Yeah.
We ought to keep that baked further, you know.
Yeah, no, 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 no. And I'll buy my own key lime pie.
Every single week.
Every single week.
I gotta pick up a key lime pie sometime in June.
Yeah, there you go. All right. Is there any new business to come before the board?
If it's nice knowing you.
All right, hearing none, then, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Some move.
Second. Hannah?
Aye. Aye.